Five, that's one. Okay. You'll take care of that with them. I'd like to go ahead and call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners to order. I'll ask everyone to please stand while we ask Commissioner Peacock if they'll lead us with the word of prayer and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity you have afforded us to be born and live in the greatest nation on earth. Lord, we thank you that we live in Jackson County, one of the greatest counties on earth. We pray, Lord, that you will give us wisdom and guidance so that we can make decisions that will enhance the lives of our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners meeting this morning. I'd like to remind everyone if there's any issue that you need to speak either that's on the agenda or that's not on the agenda, that asks you to come to the podium. State your name clearly for the record and please keep your comments as concise and brief as possible as we do have a fairly lengthy agenda today. Chair Lomontana motion to approve the agenda unless there are any changes or additions or deletions.
Yes, we are deleting under section four, number five, and we will revisit that this afternoon in the special meeting.
Thank you.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing now all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving down the agenda to section one, recognitions, resolutions, and presentations. Ms. Daniels, I think we've got a presentation from Mr. David Kent. With the, and it's our presentation of the annual fire control report. Good morning.
Good. I'm Roger Ebert, San Forest Ranger with the Florida Forest Service here in Jackson County. I said, I here present the 2022-2023 Annual Fire Control Report. I'm going to kind of touch on some of the high points from throughout the year. Someone turn it over to Barry Stafford, he's our county forester, he'll get the county. The annual fire control report for Jackson County covered the period from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Included forward our highlights of the year. As of July 1st, 2023, a total of 69 Jackson County landowners received fire line plowing totaling 8,502 acre plow and conducted one mitigation burn for a total of 108 acres. The current charge for fire line plowing is $108 per hour and contract burns are $20 per acre. We're also actively spreading the fire prevention message in Jackson County's year with school programs, parades, local and state park events, and civic groups. We conduct 11 programs reaching 3,060 people. We also recorded 54.20 inches of rainfall for Jackson County this year. Fire crews responded to 129 incidents this year, 76 were wildfires that burned 432 acres in Jackson County, and 31 notice of violation was issued for escape fires. Florida Forest Service issued authorization for 14,930 acres of broadcast burning and issued authorization for 4,074 pile burning. Total known authorization, 1,078. That's about it in the high point. So hey, it's a pleasure working with local officials here in Jackson County, the fire department. They do a tremendous job. They make our job a lot easier. So we get there as much time as the fire balance did out. They do a really good job. Someone turn it over to Barry, you're the county forester.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very good morning.
Thank y'all for your time this morning. Give our county forester a report. Over the past year, assisted 200 to 250 landowners and homeowners in Jackson County. In celebration of Arbor Day this year, we held three tree giveaways. We gave away over a thousand sealings of various types and locations in Malone, Mariana, and Alford. I also partnered with the University of Florida Extension Office, Girl Scouts Incorporated, and Jackson County 4H. We planted about 330 longleaf pine seedlings out there in the caverns. Other youth program activities included me working with several of our schools at the FA chapters to help prepare them for the annual FFA forestry career development event. During Florida Forest Week in October, myself along with several other forestry and agriculture professionals and tree farmers visited fourth grade classes across Jackson County just to teach them about the importance of trees and forestry. Next, I'd like to highlight our government programs for landowners. The Florida Timber Recovery Block Grant Program is actually still still ongoing. Created for landowners with forest land damage by Hurricane Michael, as y'all know. And at this time, it has paid out over $200 million to landowners with, you know, timber loss in Jackson County and several other panhandle counties. In addition, those landowners who had at least 50% loss are now receiving a second round payment, and that's something that's still, I think, going to go on through the rest of this year. Through our Southern Pine Beetle Prevention Culture Program, eight Jackson County private non-industrial landowners were approved for approximately $28,000 to handle the cost of conducting for dry burns and tree plantings. And through our Carbon Culture Program, nine Jackson County private non-industrial landowners were approved for approximately $250,000 for site prep and tree planting costs. And with this program, we are currently taking applications right now. They have had at least 20 acres to plant to sign up for. And that'll be going on. We'll be taking applications through all the state teams for that. But with that, if y'all have any questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask a couple of questions. Since the hurricane and so much of our so many of our pine trees have been damaged, has that had any impact on the pine beetle itself, the impacts?
There was initially, for a short time, well, for a little while, there was for a variety of pine beetles. For the southern pine beetle, that's the one that's the biggest, the vast one that's going to wipe out, you know, has the potential to wipe out acres over a matter of, you know, very short time. But we did see a lot of other ones that were, and we saw them affecting our younger pines, which we normally haven't seen. Me personally haven't seen that since, you know, before Hurricane Michael. But that kind of ran its course, and then so for a while now, that's been, you know, pretty light.
Because so many of the mature trees were damaged as a result of the hurricane, and that's just what was left essentially?
Right.
Yeah, makes sense. Well, I noticed in the report that there were 31 notice of violations. What are those primarily a result of?
Point of burning, it could be a crack pile or free pile in the yard, and it escapes. We'll come over and it's kind of, it's kind of a side station we don't charge unless we unload the dozer into the fire line around fire, then we charge. The weight of water runs out, that's all it is, is escape fire. It's just kind of more or less a documentation. If they get more, then we won't issue for it. If they get more like three a year, we want to give them off in session.
Thank you. Commissioner Peacock.
Barry, you said that the grant program was still ongoing. Did you say 50 or 60% down?
50%.
I've had several calls about.
So if you had, and it didn't have to be all of it an average, but if you had any stands on the property that had at least 50% loss, then those fans are eligible to receive this second round.
Has there been any discussion about the possibility of maybe plowing for free or burning in an effort to try to control this stuff that Michael put down?
Right, yes, sir. And that, so we did for a little while, we did have some crews right after the hurricane. Left for a year, roughly, we ran and we did, we were going around the places and where they had existing roads or fire lines before the hurricane, then we were going in for no charge and cleaning out, you know, just opening those back up.
Okay, but that program's going, right?
That that part is, now we've got, we've got another machine, we got a machine that's called Raptor, about the mulcher machine. And I think you gotta have like six structures within a quarter mile. And we come in with a barrier or a mulcher barrier around structures to just keep, in case there's a wildfire and keep the fire spread too long, you know. Kind of, kind of put a little bit of security line around it. So we started that probably about six months ago. We actually work on it today.
Good that you're working on it. I may want to check a little though because we had to do that right after the storm with that machine. But I'm sure that now it's all grown up. And there's still a lot of debris on the ground. If it catches fire, there's about 100 and something houses back in there.
Okay.
That was question, Mr. Chairman. Since Michael, have y'all noticed the decline of people looking not to replant? Impossible.
Definitely been some of that, but there has been quite a, quite a bit of people who have gone back and replanted. I have no idea exactly how many. There's been significant on both sides. We definitely didn't bring that. Talking people that say, no, I'm not doing that again, but I just. The pine is a long-term property, but that's still, I think more people have actually gone back and replanted it not.
Okay, that's good. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I'll say on behalf of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners that, you know, a rural area like Jackson County that has a large stock of forest, certainly the service that Florida Forest Service provides to Jackson County and all throughout North Florida is very beneficial. And we certainly appreciate the effort that you put into managing and protecting our forest and appreciate you taking the time to come today and present your report.
Absolutely. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Okay, moving down the agenda, we've got item number two, which is board recognition of employees for years of service. Ms. Daniels.
Jackie Register is going to come present.
Morning.
Good morning.
So today for years of service, I got Mr. Jason Hamilton here. He started July 28th, 2008, been with us for 15 years. I think it was a pretty good one to do because as I was talking, they said, well, he's not on first name basis uptown, so that's always what we're looking for. But you know, we don't have to close the door on him or nothing. But Jason has, he's been married to his wife Amanda since 2019. He enjoys farming, fishing, and hunting. The name Jason originates from the Greek language and means a person who heals. The word I chose today for him is initiative versus unresponsiveness. And that means recognizing and doing what needs to be done before I'm asked to do it. So for the, for the past 15 years, Jason has primarily been a brush cutter. His skill has put him in a position to train new operators. He has also worked on the backhoe. He's done asphalt patching and sandbagging, and he assesses complaints on behalf of his supervisor as needed. Jason goes beyond, beyond performing his routine daily duties. He pays attention to his surroundings and identifies areas needing attention. He brings his observation as well as, as well as a well-thought-out plan of action to a supervisor for consideration. And Jason set a great example for his peers to take the same initiative, which can only benefit the department in being more proactive in his duties. And we want to thank you for 15 years of loyalty in Jackson County.
Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, we appreciate your hard work and dedication. We would thank you, Jackson County, a better place to live and work, and appreciate the diligence and all the hard work you put in your job. Very much, very appreciate it. Okay. Okay, moving down the agenda, we've got section two, which is our public hearing. We've got a request for board review and approval of a small-scale map amendment. Ms. Daniels.
This is a request for board approval to change the future land use designation of a one-acre parcel from Ag 2 to commercial located approximately .37 miles southeast of New Bethel Road on the east side of Highway 231 in Campbellton in unincorporated Jackson County. On July 17th, the planning commission did recommend approval.
Okay, with that being said, we'll close out our regularly scheduled meeting, go into a public hearing. I'll ask anyone in the audience if they are here to speak either for or against the small-scale, the described small-scale map amendment. Seeing no hands in the audience, Fred, is there anyone online that has indicated the desire to speak either for or against this small-scale map amendment?
If there's anybody online that would like to speak for or against this, they may use the raise hand feature via Zoom or star nine via telephone.
Mr. Chairman, once we know there's no one, I also need to read the ordinance by that.
Okay.
I see no hands.
Okay, if you would proceed with reading it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 91-6, which adopted the Jackson County Conference of Plans to provide for the adoption of a certain small-scale future land use map amendment to the Jackson County Conference of Plan, providing for severability and for a dealer providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. With no one either in the audience or online wishing to speak either for or against this small-scale map amendment, we'll close out the public hearing, go back into our regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the small-scale amendment.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions? Comments, clarifications? Hearing now all those in favor of the motion is stated. Please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving down the agenda, item number two, board review and approval of a small-scale map amendment, Darby property. Ms. Daniels.
This is a request for board approval to change the future land use designation of 9.05 acres from Ag 2 to mixed-use urban transitional located on the south side of Old Spanish Trail, approximately one mile east of the intersection of Highway 90 and Old Spanish Trail in unincorporated Jackson County. On July 17th, the planning commission recommended approval, and I will go ahead and read the ordinance. An ordinance amending ordinance number 91-6, which adopted the Jackson County Conference of Plans to provide for the adoption of a certain small-scale future land use map amendment to the Jackson County Conference of Plans, providing for severability and for a dealer providing for an effective date.
Thank you. We'll close out our regular scheduled meeting, go into a public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against this amendment. Seeing no hands in the audience, Fred, is there anyone online indicating a desire to speak either for or against this amendment?
As a reminder, anybody online that would like to speak for or against this may use the raise hand feature via Zoom or star nine via telephone. I see no hands.
Thank you, Fred. There being no one in the audience nor online wishing to speak either for or against this amendment, we'll close out the public hearing, go back into our regular meeting. And Chair Lomontana motion?
I make a motion, we approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Clarifications? Hearing now all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number three, moving down the agenda, is board review and approval of a general development order. This is for a RV and mobile home park. Ms. Daniels.
The request for a general development order to construct a six-unit RV and mobile home park consisting of 2,880 square feet of impermeable surface for the proposed concrete RV pad and a 9,483 square foot vehicular use area. The project is located at 5264 Harder Loop in unincorporated Jackson County, and on July 17th, the planning commission recommended approval.
Okay, you've heard the description of the development order and the fact that the planning is on a board approved, the DO. With that being said, we'll close out the regular meeting, go into a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the approval of this development order for the RV park? Seeing no hands in the audience, Fred, anyone online wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of this development order?
Anybody wishing to speak for or against this may use the raise hand feature via Zoom or star nine via telephone. I see no hands.
Thank you, Fred. With that being said, we'll close out the public hearing, go back into our regular meeting. Chair Lomontana motion?
I make a motion, we approve this.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve the development order, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Comments? Hearing now all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That completes our public hearing section of our agenda. We'll move into community development. Section three, this is board approval to issue a variance to our code of ordinances for a temporary alcoholic beverage license. Ms. Daniels.
On July 25th, 2023, a request for a variance to the Jackson County Code of Ordinances, section 40-28, to allow the consumption of alcohol at Blue Springs Park for a one-day event hosted by Cave Adventures and the Jackson County Chamber of Commerce was submitted. The event will be held on September 16th from the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If the request is approved, the applicant would also like to request approval of a temporary alcoholic beverage license to serve alcoholic beverages at the event.
Okay, you've heard the description and the request. Chair Lomontana motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Peacock.
So school will be back in session, right?
Yeah.
And what does the event entail?
Yeah. So I am helping Ed and Stacey.
For the record, your name, please.
Carrie Eaton, Chair of the TDC, and also friends with Stacy and Ed Sorenson. We are hosting a 20-year anniversary for Cave Adventures in this county. We have precluded the, or included the park. We have made arrangements for us to be there. It's from 10 to 2. We are partners with the TDC. Chamber of Commerce is where, as well as Marianna Main Street. We will be showcasing what Ed has done in this community for 20 years. He works hand-in-hand with the county by collecting park money for every diver that goes into the caves. He has spoke all over the world, Poland, Dominican Republic, United States, Mexico. He's responsible for recovery and rescues across the states as well as here locally. We want to showcase what they do for tourism, the number of divers that come into this community impacting bed tax dollars, sales tax dollars, and economic impact is between 5,000 and 10,000 divers per year. We would like to showcase what they can bring in, make the community more aware of how they partner with our county, responsible for the Sheriff's Opple's dive team. But we would like to make it a fun event. We're not trying to sell alcohol in the respect that the chamber is working side by side with us. So the profits from that would go directly back to the Chamber of Commerce. I do not collect funds on parts that I sell. It is complimentary. I did bring it for the board so that you could have it. That as what we know that Southern Fields Brewery has licensed their business in Jackson County. I am a private business, but do hold a $2 million liability coverage, certified in serving alcohol, and we make sure that we monitor ID. So there's not going to be an issue with serving underage or anything like that. There will be a quantity consumption limit. It's not a free-for-all. We are just there to make awareness to the community about what we, what they offer and what they're bringing in. So we would like to ask for approval for that and hope, if you have any questions or you would like to have a copy of the LLC as well as the liability, yes.
I have a question. What type of alcohol are you serving?
The brewery will be serving beer.
Beer.
Beer. We will do one complimentary mocktail, which is a non-alcoholic version for people who don't want to have alcohol, and we will have one cocktail option as far as liquor option. Those are not, will not be sold. It will be complimentary.
The beer will be sold, right?
The beer will be sold, but it'll be sold under the Chamber of Commerce, which is a nonprofit.
Any other questions? I'll say that, you know, Ed and his group have been a integral part of the mill pond activities out there for many, many years. Ed has also served on the TDC for a number of years. I think it's a wonderful partnership. It has, his efforts, as you said, carry a world-renowned. His efforts towards recovery and rescue, again, are a critical part of the cave diving that goes on in Mill Pond. And as you also said, those caves are explored and visited by people all over the world. So now I'm certainly supportive of this.
We would just like to recognize what he's done. I mean, within the last six weeks, he's done body recovery there. You know, what he does, we just want people to be aware, safety. We want more of our community become, you know, to be dive-aware, what they can, all the different kinds of things. It doesn't mean just going into a cave. It can be open water diving, learning to be certified safe water, all of those things. So I think the partnership, you know, we're just looking for a little bit of a elevation to the event. There will be food trucks there, so it's not just alcohol and no food trucks. There will be local food trucks there to serve, you know, so that we can incorporate the community. We invite you all to come and learn what there is to learn about caves and the diving aspect and the economic impact that our, these divers do in this community every day.
One other question real quickly, and you may have said it, and I missed it, I apologize, but I guess this has been coordinated with our concessionaire?
Yes.
There's no doubt that Cave Adventure does a great service to Jackson County and the world, and we truly appreciate what it does. So who is going to actually kind of, Carrie, you going to be up there? Who else going to be kind of watching?
We're the server. I am the actual server of the Tilted Gypsy, the Jackson Social LLC. I am the bartender. So I do ID, I am serve safe, and I do know awareness. It will be one complimentary alcohol drink. They can purchase beer at but we're, they can purchase beer from Southern Fields, but this is not an environment where most divers are not even big drinkers. I mean, most people maybe not know, Ed doesn't even drink. He doesn't do any of that stuff. It is just something where people are having a burger or having a snack. They can have a beer and a, you know, to go along with it, but it's not an alcohol frenzy of any sort.
Well, I may come out there, but I am not going in the cave.
Well.
I can assure you of that. You keep serving it. I make a motion to approve the request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing now all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. Oh, ho, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And also tell Ed we totally appreciate all his, all his work out there. It does not go unnoticed lightly, for sure.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down the agenda to section four, which is reports and requests. I trust everyone's had a chance to look through the items included in the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Comments, clarifications? Hearing now all those in favor of the motion, stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number two, Jackson County Economic Development Council report. Mr. Gilmore. Good morning.
Good morning. How are y'all doing this morning? I'm gonna make this as brief as I can. I know y'all do get your monthly reports, so there is a lot more of our daily activities involved in those, if you want to take a look. But just some quick updates. So we are currently working 17 leads and 54 projects. Of the last time I was here, we were working 11 leads and 40 projects. You can see there has been a large uptick recently. I think it was about two to two and a half weeks ago, we had five requests for proposals within two days sent from Enterprise Florida, or I guess Florida Commerce now. So we have been very, very busy with those. We actually did have a call with one of those, a follow-up call yesterday, looking at Spanish Trail Commerce Park, one of our four certified sites, so we're really excited about that. We also did have a site visit about two and a half, three weeks ago. The company is in industrial construction, and they did look at multiple sites in Marianna as long, as well as a site in Graceville. Also, update on Project Tap. As you know, it's a logistics and distribution project that they're going to employ 25 people, retain 10 employees, and create 15 new jobs. And that final construction of this facility and the utility and road extension should be finalized hopefully beginning of 2024. That's what we're looking at. In February, we received a grant from IEDC, which is the International Economic Development Council, for them to send multiple consultants to visit our community and do a deep dive into our certified sites. While spending four days here, they attended community events, spoke with multiple stakeholders, which were some of y'all, I believe, and visited each site to compile the necessary data to create a report with recommendations on moving forward. They did recently return this report to us and gave us, gave a presentation of their findings to our EDC board.
Will you get a copy of that report, Zach?
We sure can. Actually, we've been discussing with them about giving you a report in an upcoming meeting as well. I will get back with you on that as soon as we can coordinate. Florida's Great Northwest will be holding their, so they do hold an annual site selector inbound mission each year, which we have mentioned before, and you know, this is will be my fourth time attending. This year, we have actually got them to host it in Jackson County. So we're very excited. Everybody's going to be staying at the New Hampton Inn out of the interstate, and so we're super excited. I don't know all the details just yet, but we we might have like some small. Like a a small welding certificate. So like the site consultants can go out of Chipola. And you do have like a two to three hour learning session on how to weld. They can. It can be very interactive and then we can send them home with a certificate from Chipola. So that's going to be really cool. We're excited about that. And we're going to have E D Os from all over Northwest Florida here as well.
What is the date on that?
That is going to be November eighth through the tenth, I believe, right off the top of my head. I think it's the eighth through the tenth. We also met with retail strategies for their retail academy workshop to discuss findings from their research of our retail trade area. We have a follow up call with them next month to discuss implement implementation tactics. Our swing from the fences in Jackson County Site Consultant Mailer that we've discussed multiple times. From last year, won the Innovation and Marketing Award from the Florida Economic Development Council in May during their annual conference. This has now been recognized by our state organization, as I just mentioned, and our regional organization, the Southern Economic Development Council. And next time I'm here, I think we'll have some more news on that from the International Economic Development Council. Which is going to be exciting, which we will be there going there in September. So our next meeting, we will have an update on that. We were also able to utilize co op funds from Enterprise Florida and Team Florida to send out a follow up box that featured our workforce and training assets. It did seem to be a big hit once again, as we have received an influx of positive reactions from the recipients. We have attended multiple events throughout the last few months revolved around networking with site consultants and marketed Jackson County and its assets. This has already helped us build a new valuable relation, new valuable relationships, and has already proven beneficial in assisting with some current projects. One is Tate Flight, as well as cultivating new projects, which I mentioned, we had a call yesterday. So that actually that consultant. Actually, we all met at a consultant event in Florida earlier this year. So that's exciting. And later this week, we will be meeting with Florida Commerce's Business Development Team. With other E D Os represented in the state to get a view of the new landscape since transition from Enterprise Florida. As well as updates on from them on how to how processes will work moving forward. And then last thing I want to say is thank you all and everybody that's give us given us continued support. But especially to Will Ann and Rhett, we are very appreciative for everything that y'all do for us on a continual on a daily basis, and we're excited that. We will have hopefully have some really big news towards the end of this year, beginning of next. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner McKenney?
Like on that grant you received, can you give us the water amount?
So I don't know the exact amount. You talking about the I E D C one? So I don't know the exact amount the grant was received, and and we don't see anything other than the consultants come. The grant actually just pays the consultants to come to Jackson County. To do the evaluation that we asked for.
So you what, less than ten thousand dollars, you think, or what?
It there was one to, I think there was six participants, so that paid for their hotels for four nights, their their rental vehicles, their flights, their food. I would say probably somewhere around six to ten thousand dollars. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If I had to guess, I don't have any idea. So I'm totally totally guessing.
We appreciate everything you do as well.
Yes, sir. Well, thank y'all.
Commissioner Pickoff, you have a question.
Blue sky. It's blue today.
It is a blue sky today. Is that what you're asking? It's beautiful day.
We are.
We're working through some some issues with the current project, so.
We we've hit a couple of roadblocks.
About the processor.
So that is moving forward, we should have a call with them. Either later this week or next week to finalize a meeting. We're trying to see when the them and their other representatives can come down and meet with the city. About some final negotiations on wastewater.
All right. Very good. Any other questions from Mr. Rutchfield, Mr. Branch? Zach, as always, we appreciate the report, the update, and I'll say as Commissioner Pickoff usually does, keep up the good work and we look forward to hearing some good news, hopefully real soon.
Sounds great. Well, thank y'all. Will do. Thank y'all very much. Y'all have a blessed one.
You too. Okay, I don't think there's any action that is necessitated via that report. So with that being said, moving down the agenda, item number three under section four. This is board discussion of the new sheriff's office locations. Sheriff Edenfield.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to come speak. So with me today, I have Mr. Bill Rutherford and his son, Dan of Mr. Bill. These guys are from Clemens Rutherford and Associates. They're an architectural firm out of Tallahassee who specialize. In the design, engineering and construction of public safety facilities. So a few weeks ago, when we were asked by you guys to consider different options for the locations of. The new bill, the new office. So I reached out to Mr. Rutherford and asked them to look at the two locations in depth. And to give us their opinion and to just basically state facts. And so so the board can make an educated decision on on where we go here. So with that being said. You guys have the the copy that we provided. And I'm glad this sort of worked out this way and we asked, we were asked these as these guys to do an in depth look. Because there were some things like on the the desired location. For me, rather, is Penn Avenue and Mashburn. And there's a little bit of wetlands in the back. So I know initially we talked about twenty and Mr. Rutherford to go. In depth with it and explaining it, but it's, I think it's a little bit more than that that's needed. So with that being said.
Bill Rutherford, Clemens Rutherford, thank you for letting us speak today about it. We were asked to look at two pieces of property. The two pieces of property, there's a common Penn Avenue that they both touch. One is on Washburn and Penn, the other one is on Penn right beside it. And I think you have a sketch that shows you. And we looked at it from the possibility of this being fifty to seventy five year use facility, which is what they they should last that long, could be that well built. And we look for any issues that contribute to it costing more than it should. And in this case, we're looking at two sites. And one has a much greater site cost than the other. And I'm only Dan walk through this with you, each one of the sites and tell you why. We would recommend the site on Washburn Penn. That particular site is founded on that site. So if you have any questions while we're talking about, you just stop us. We'll answer any question you have. Fine, you know, if you understand it.
And we, so like my dad said, we we evaluated both sites and basically. Because we don't have surveys, we don't have geotechnical reports or anything like that. Our our information is based on either me going and snoping through the woods. Looking at aerial imagery, looking at souls maps, soul data, wetland issues, things like that. The site that's on Mashburn Road is roughly thirty acres. The site is currently zone commercial, so it will. Allow for basically institutional uses, which allows for institutions and government buildings. So there's only shouldn't be an issue. The site is currently wooded. It would have to be clear, but there it is undeveloped. There's roughly according to aerial. Topography, there's less than ten feet of vertical change across this site. And I'm mentioning that because when we get to the next, I'll show you why. The site does contain a wetland, but the wetlands, if. It mitigated properly, it can be enhanced, it can be turned into. An area for community development, running into a fish pond, get kids out fishing. I know there's a lot of law enforcement.
We see a lot of counties to build these facilities and have the opportunity for something like this wetland on the side of this property. Where the sheriff's office and community, they develop it. And we say same primary community fishing tournament for children, they come out and walk around, they they learn something about. Environmental issues with water. But if it comes away for the community and sheriff's office and the county to come together, everybody benefits. So the little wetlands on the site is really a big plus.
Utility service, water and sewer, it it is on the south. What would be the southwest corner down on Pusher Road, there is an eight inch water main. We would have to verify capacities. The lanes with the city of Marianna, but you do have water on the south. You have sewer up close to the the northwest corner of the Penn and Mashburn. So it would take a small extension, but we could get sewer service to this to the site. You have access right now on three sides. Pusher Road would require to be paid paid. The radio towers up on the upper right hand corner of the page. We actually backed it off somewhere around. As far as placing the blocks you see on the page, somewhere between two hundred and two hundred fifty feet from that tower because of crumple zones. We don't want it falling and hitting. So it actually a radio tower is going to occupy a large, large space of land that you really don't want to build under or around. The net sheet. Is a cross section that's cut north to south through about thirty acres. And you'll see there's there's really only about seven feet of vertical change across that across that. Site north to south. Just and the math is not exactly right because we don't have surveys. But if you were to say go in and try to balance this site, you're looking at somewhere. Plus or minus seventy five thousand to a hundred thousand cubic yards of of material to balance this site. If you can get good numbers, four or five bucks a yard to balance it, you're looking at somewhere around a half a million dollars to go in. And make a flat site so that you can then then start bringing pads up out of the ground, put the structure off. Click to the next page. This is the site that's off of Penn Avenue. And the the bullets. They kind of speak for themselves, but if you will flip over to the last page. That's a cross section of that site. Where there is roughly thirty feet of vertical change running across that site. The the issue becomes that there's also a sewer main that follows what is actually National Witness Inventory referred to it as a riverine. It's actually a little small creek or stream that runs through that site. There is also a city of Marianna sewer main that follows that that creek. You got two issues here. One is the is the field. With thirty feet of vertical field, we're obviously not going to come and suggest that you go and fill a site thirty vertical feet. So we would try if that site shows you, you try to cut some of the side, then you try to fill some of the side. The problem is you're looking at somewhere, if you're going to fill it somewhere around a half a million cubic yards of material. That at five dollars a yard, two and a half million dollars just to fill the site. The sewer line that's running across the site. Now you just put twenty five, thirty feet of field on top of the city of Marianna sewer line. Which when I spoke to them, that that's not going to happen. They don't, no one wants their sewer line buried that deep. So we would have to relocate somewhere between fourteen and fifteen hundred lineal feet of sewer main. On this site, that's all of these things just keep adding dollars to to this site. If we were going to go in and say, we're going to try to balance this site. The problem then becomes when you have to drop your elevations low enough to get the material to cut, to flip over in the hole, then you're left with a smaller usable area. So I'm not sure that this site here is going to support all of the expansion you would need for, like my dad said, fifty to seventy five years of build out. So at the end of the day. When we start looking at this, looking at usable areas, looking at development costs. The site that's off of Mashburn Road, my opinion ends down as if the site is going to cost you less, it's going to be there. To support the fifty to seventy five years of expansion.
Much, much flatter terrain, easier to deal with. We've got a situation anywhere we go in this country to build, site work is a major issue. If I take fifteen to twenty percent of this money, put it in the ground and I'm cutting away from these buildings, but it. So the site and washroom definitely the better site.
When we do presentations, unfortunately, I'm the guy that buries people's money. Don't don't pick a lack of that. That's just what I do, water sewer storm. So. In in years past, you can see where civil side has been somewhere between eight, nine, ten percent of project budgets. Now when it start creeping up to twenty to twenty five percent. Then we we need to back up and look at rather than burying your dollars in the ground, let's look at building it above. So we need to start out first with the site and we can do that.
You know, of course, I've had a discussion with Sheriff Edenfield and. Not taking into account the cost considerations, it's not taking into account just location. The the context, the fact that we're hoping over fifty to seventy five years, the property around that interchange will develop commercially. We're taking, my concern is that we're taking out a large piece of property that could be used for commercial development, hotel, gas stations, retail, whatever. And we're basically placing the institution with you there. Well, I guess my question would be a two fold. Number one, we we're only looked at two sites thus far. Are there other sites that, you know, that that we need to look at before we make a decision? I mean, as.
I haven't been made aware of any, the the thing here, Mr. Rutherford and and board is. We were, we were given this money this year. There's a sheriff in a in a in a neighboring county that was given money a year ago and he hasn't broken ground yet. And his money that he was given a year ago doesn't build what he was given to build a year ago. So he's he's behind the eight ball. And I don't want to see that happen to us. And I understand that that property is is you could call commercial close to interstate. That's another reason that I want it. I I want to build a state of the art public safety facility that, mind you, employs one hundred people today. Where I I know the future could bring anything, but I want to put one hundred employees on it. To which, you know, the the state's been gracious enough to pour two million dollars a year into the salaries of our law enforcement correction officers in the last year. That's the same people that gave us that twelve hundred acre that gave you guys. That's the same people that gave us that money to build this thing with. So I just want to be responsible. I want to put it in the right spot for the right reason. I'm not standing here. Pitching this just because I think personally that's, this ain't about Donnie. I can assure you, this is about the citizens of the county and and looking into the future. Our state has blossomed, has has done great things through the leadership of our governor and and our lawmakers. And the reason is, it's not because of Disney and the beaches, it's because that they put public safety first. Okay, and when you put public safety first, people feel safe when they come to this state. That's why people coming here in record numbers every day is because it's a safe place. So I'm asking you guys. Put public safety first. Let's draw people to Jackson County because it's a safe place to live, because we have good schools, we have good hospitals, we have good roads, so on and so forth. And with this. If you look at this proposal. We're vacating three other properties. So the old office with the. The antenna, the tower. With the construction of a new radio tower, that property could be sold, used commercially, whatever you guys choose to do with it. Also on this property here will be a canine kennel. So we currently occupy the old kennel on on the Endeavor property. You guys would have that back because I'm sure you got big plans for that in the future, as well as the building that we're currently in. So what this would do, it would get us all. On one piece of property. So we don't have this over there, that over there, and this over here. So setting that to say this, my request before you guys. Is to be able to build a public safety facility at the corner of Mashburn and Penn Avenue.
And and again, you know, I agree with everything that you said, and I think. Everything that you said can be accomplished at either one of those two sites.
I I don't, right, the.
And again, I'm not, I'm I'm not even sure that that these two sites represent. At this point in time, possibly even the best location. I just don't know at this point in time that we've. Looked at all possible locations. We, these are the only two sites that we've been made been made aware of that. Might suffice for this facility. Go ahead.
David Melvin is working on a master plan. David, you come up and tell us where this.
Mr. Melman is the one that put this this Mashburn and Penn Avenue, and he's the one that gave me the idea a year ago.
What I'm talking about is when we were given that property, the board. Asked David Melvin to repair a master plan. Where are we and how does this fit?
Well, I guess from a master planning standpoint, you know, this property is property that we've looked at. The Mashburn is is looked at as for commercial.
Right.
Development, whether Sheriff's Department, commercial development, you know, we.
development, whether Sheriff's Department, commercial development, you know, we, uh, we actually received a a, a brand and did some preliminary planning on this particular piece of property for a, uh, a project several years ago on it and, uh, so, yeah, so it is, uh, I mean, it's a good commercial piece of property, but that's where Sheriff's Station, uh, Sheriff's Department or what is a, a good piece of property there.
Yeah, I remember one
Do any master planning, you know, well, we always look at government use for that the site by the, the jail, it's squeezed between two government uses right now.
It's, it's hard to squeeze a sheriff's office in somewhere. Sheriff's office is more than a building.
So how big is your building?
Forty-something thousand square feet, David. Yes, sir. Uh, you gotta consider, I mean, you got the plan right there. The radio, like Mr., Mr. Rutherford spoke, you can't put, but buildings and structures that's so close to that because it's collapsible here. You, you have to have somewhere for an impound yard. You have to have somewhere for, for training to occur. So there's, there's a lot more than just an office. And, um, my staff worked hard going after this appropriation. And we were blessed to get it. And again, uh, before you, I'm requesting this location.
I have a question for Mr. Melvin. Mr. Melvin, this, this lot here next to the, lot next to this proposed site of the north of it there. Approximately how much in that wooded area there that's, uh, can be developed?
The, uh,
North of the site.
Which, which, sorry, are you looking at?
Right there.
Yeah, there's a lot of development, uh, there. I think it's a total of about fifty acres. I, I guess it shows thirty acres right here and then it, it wraps on around kind of behind the, uh, current sheriff's office. You got a ditch that runs from there and then probably fifty acres.
So you're saying that the
But there's an addition, that's
Is this, is it already zoned for commercial as well? Is it zoned for commercial as well?
Yes, all of that is, that fifty acre is just on the market.
Yeah, yeah, relative to, again, going back to the, I'm going to call it the jail site, if you, if you will, just to differentiate it from the, uh, uh, the, the Mashburn, uh, Pusser Road site. Uh, it's, it's size-wise, it has enough room to fit everything. The biggest, the biggest concern, uh, is the cost associated with the grading and then the sewer line that runs through it. And initially, when, when I had talked to David about this, I, I thought the figure that we were looking at was roughly around a quarter of a million dollars worth of additional cost associated with grading, but now I'm hearing that that's potentially a lot more than that.
In, in our opinion, we looked at that, it's hard to tell without survey and sure, be exact, the full conditions. Right. You think you're about two to two and a half times the cost on the site and the big ditch that you are on the other side. Right? It's definitely a cut and filled.
That stems from grading and then the rerouting of the sewer line as well.
Basically, like, uh, of area, so when I tell you there's a thirty foot, thirty foot vertical difference, that's literally me going, I said, out to the sidewalk and looking at the handout, me going on the Google, looking, cutting sections through it, what the elevations are. I, I won't sit here and tell you there's exactly thirty feet short of fall, but I will tell you there's between twenty-five and thirty feet of fall across that side.
Yeah, and I'll walk that side as well. And there is, there is definitely a grading uh, issue that'll have to be taken care of. But here in Jackson Canyon, of course, I'm an architect as well. We do, we do a lot, a lot of different buildings and we've worked on a lot of challenging sites. And I mean, it's, it's certainly an extra cost, uh, but it's certainly one that can be overcome. Uh, if, if this were to be the, the chosen site, I would ask, i- is it, is it feasible to put the, the, the facility on this site? Is it feasible?
Steamboat?
Yes.
With enough money, you can do it.
All right, exactly.
You got the money, it's just in this case, I'd be concerned if I spend twenty or twenty thousand of this money on the site.
And, and I guess that's
I don't have money to build it.
And I guess that's where I'm going is, is if this site, if it's the preferred location geographically and, but it's not the optimal site because of the grading that's going to be required. And, and if it's the desire to reserve the property at Mashburn Road and, uh, Mashburn Road and Pusser Road for commercial property, is there another site that we need to look at pretty quickly to see if it's something that we, that would be better than both of these sites? I, I don't know, timing wise, I understand what you're saying, Sheriff, that, uh, every minute we waste, you know,
The, the money we got a month ago, you know, every, every month ago by inflation. Um, I'm simply asking for thirty acres out of twelve hundred. That's what I'm asking for.
But you're asking for, you know, the
It's, it's, yeah, but I, I, and think about what we're talking about here. We're talking about a public safety facility. It costs you nothing. Appropriation from, from our state legislators and our governor, twenty million dollars almost. So again, you've, you've got my request before you, if, if there's, um, if there's other properties, um, I'm, I'm, I'm going by what Mr. Mr. Melvin recommended to me a year ago. And I, I, I think it's fitting. I mean, there's nine acres right across the road on the, on the east side of, or south side of Mashburn. Build a motel there. Uh, so
I think, um, Mr. Jim. Oh, I think the location is adequate and I think it will help us to sell the parcels next to it because I believe that bringing a business in, you want to be closest you could to a sheriff department. At least I would be, as a businessman.
There, there is, um, not to cut you off, Mr. McKinney, but, um, when people are traveling up and down the interstate, if they see a sheriff's office next to a business or an establishment or a, a motel, they're probably ten times greater to stop and stay there because again, they feel safe.
Right.
Um, you've got a, across the road, you've got an industrial park that has nothing in it yet, you know? So what would make a, a business owner, a potential, um, tenant of that industrial park feel safer than they investing in a property that has a sheriff's office right across the road? And again, I'm not asking for the entire endeavor property. I'm asking for that one block and you can go commercial around it. Uh, and I, and I get your guys' valid concerns. I understand.
You, you, um, I know your first was asking for twenty acres, needing thirty acres now.
So after, uh, Rutherford and Associates came in and, and looked part of its wetland and those people that we lobbied to give us twenty million dollars, they were adamant that we build for the future. Like, don't come back in a few years and like say, hey, we, so this is a fifty-year at a minimum facility. This will be here when most of us in this room are gone. And so we're trying to build for, for possible future growth and the consideration of the wetlands that's on the backside off Pusser Road, uh, take some of it as well. And you got the tower that's so, you can't get so close around the base of it. So these guys, they do, they do this every day. That is their business. And when they come to me and said, hey, if you're going to do this the right way, this is what I recommend. So I'm going with these guys' recommendation. Yes.
You going out a helicopter coming in?
So that's another thing. Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. uh, Grudgefield. The helicopter will be housed at this facility. You can have your hanger and sell it, whatever you want to do with it. Uh, so that's one, two, three, that's four properties we'll vacate to be able to be on one, at one location.
Mr. Branch?
Tell me again the difference money-wise.
Well, just, just, I hate to keep going back to that because, because nothing's accurate right now. There's, but looking at aerials, when you got a let's assume you, you have a, a twenty to twenty-five, in this case thirty-foot depth of vertical change. Uh, you take that across seven, eight hundred feet, seven, eight hundred feet wide, you're going to be left with somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a million cubic yards of material that is needed to fill that hole. Whether or not we, we lessen that half a million by cutting some of the site and flipping it over in the hole and then filling it. When you start doing earthwork on site, local guys, you could probably get someone to do it for four or five bucks a yard just pushing a half a million cubic yards. That's two and a half million dollars. If we have to truck it in, now you're getting up to twelve, fifteen dollars a yard to truck it in. Now you're getting up three point seven, three point eight million. The, the site on Mashburn and Penn, you're only looking at between seventy-five and eighty thousand cubic yards of material which you could get on site simply by cutting it and pushing it over. There's no, there's no infill there. That's how it can be balanced. To balance the site on Penn Avenue with, with the creek in it? I, I'm not saying you can't balance it, but when you do, you're going to reduce your usable footprint. Because, because just because of grading and slope, you know, it's going to cut so much. My opinion, you're going to be two and a half to three times more building on the site with, with creek running through it on Mashburn than you will. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, on Penn than you would be on Mashburn.
So two and a half million, three million dollars difference.
And I mean, it'll be on that, on that, at least.
And I'm, and I'm not sure what that creek, the designation of that creek, but that creek will have to be looked at. And if the Corps of Engineers steps in and they put their identity on this site, uh, we will be ten to eleven months before they will let us leave again. They, they have that. They are that powerful, they have it. You don't do it without their approval. Um, I'm thinking that they may have jurisdiction here. Have a word with us.
Is, is, how long has that sewer line been there, David? Is that an old sewer line?
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, uh, I was trying to think if it, uh, just went in, but, but we're in the process, we had to decide to replace that sewer line, running twenty-four inch sewer line.
In the same location?
Same.
Have you run into Army Corps of Engineers, uh, issues with replacing it? I mean, is it actually replacing or is it lining it?
No, it's a replacement, yeah, yeah. It's just like an eight-inch sewer line, with a twenty-four inch uh, trunk that'll run up to Endeavor Industrial Park.
Okay.
How, how many acres is that side?
Right now, I think it's twenty-three.
Roughly twenty-three to the, and that, that literally goes up to the boundaries of every road. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know the names. Technology Drive out to Penn over to, uh, the driveway for the uh, well, I guess that's the jail at the top, but, uh, you know, there's
Goes over to the deal on the thing.
And that twenty-three acres, I mean, there's no stormwater shell on that, on that one. The, the.
Commissioner, I've got a question.
David. Obviously, we want to preserve the, you know, commercial property if we came in. Is there some way we can shift this thing around, push this property, I mean, this thing? Realign it some way to maybe have enough for a strip mall or something in there? Push, push it away from Mashburn, push it, you know, reconfigure it some way to conserve more of the.
You say leave a strip?
Conserve as much of the commercial property as we can, but yet accommodate their requests.
Move, move it from the, what I'm gonna call the, the portion of the site that's closer to the interstate, move it away from Mashburn Road. And where the, looks like you've got the Stormwater Pond or, or, uh, located along the, I'm gonna call it north edge, northeast edge. Instead of being immediately adjacent to Mashburn.
One of the things, guys, that makes this appealing, this, this location is the access from three different sides in the future. And when we were, again, lobbying for this money, uh, this place is gonna be a staging location in the event of storms in this panhandle, and that played a role in, I think, us getting that money. So you're talking about trucks, convoy of hope, those kind of trucks coming in and out, delivering goods to be dispersed to people in our county and adjacent counties in the event of catastrophe like Hurricane Michael in twenty eighteen. So just throwing that out.
We can give you access.
Off of Pusser?
We can give you access of Mashburn, Pusser and Penn Avenue. That's not an issue. But you could develop part of it as commercial. You can have a road run right through the middle of a commercial area. Uh, now, I wouldn't want your station to be right behind the motel.
Yeah, that, that's my question. Do you want blue lights and siren running?
Well, that's just like blue lights and siren, and would we try to put a motel across the road too? If you want that, I don't wanna be.
You're a half mile from an interstate freeway.
I'm sorry?
You're a half mile from an interstate freeway, Commissioner.
Oh, I know you are. Saying we could possibly.
I, I'm not talking about the sound. I'm talking about the speed, the urgency of a, of a sheriff's deputy leaving the facility.
How many times do y'all run down IT? Because before, when we were talking about Highway ninety, we had to be out there to transit the county. So I don't.
That's before my, that's before my tenure.
Four, uh, exits into county. So you have to run to, if you head east, you're going to Grand Ridge to come back to Cypress, or you go to Sneed's. Yeah, yeah. And I'm not saying you won't. I'm sure they do. But, uh, I'm just wondering if we can reconfigure it and a little and accommodate what you want in the plus conserve some of it for possible future, uh, commercial, uh, development.
What, what makes this property that, where you're, and I'm looking on David's drawing right now, where he's got the, uh, the, the office building and the parking, which is immediately adjacent to Mashburn Road, what makes that attractive to, uh, the commercial development? It's the same thing that makes it attractive for the sheriff is that it's a flat piece of property, uh, with adjacency to three roads. So I mean, it, it is, I understand it's attractive from a, a building standpoint, but it's also attractive for potential commercial development. I guess what I'm asking is, is, and again, I'm not looking at the topography, uh, for the, and I'm gonna, again, call it the, the portion of the site that's moving away from the interstate, i- is the topography on that end of the site fairly flat as well? And again, I'm. I'm looking at David's drawing.
I checked the distance from, the distance from the interstate to this property is seven tenths of a mile. At is, at the other Mariner exit, there are no hotels seven tenths of a mile away from the interstate. They're all like right on it. And so they can be seen from the interstate. I'm not saying that, that property, you couldn't put a motel on there. But that's not gonna be the first piece of property that the Hilton looks at if they come to this area. I can promise you that.
Well, there again, I mean, is it feasible to shift, uh, as Commissioner Peacock said, to shift, uh, the, the new construction to the other end of the site?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit of thought on that. I, I think maybe the way Sheriff's got it is, is a good way. Because if you go, if you keep that and corner the commercial a little bit closer to the chimney, the gym area. And that, if commercial development went there, it was high into our, our downtown, I call it the chimney, the ending area. You know, if you slid this, then you'd have the Sheriff's Department kind of dividing our civic center, chimney area and other commercial development. You're right, I don't know about hotels going, but if a hotel went, it would be nice if it didn't. Chimney, civic center area to support developments, uh, and autism center and all that. I mean, I, I don't know that shifting this and leaving that little out parcel there would be very competitive.
I was only talking, you know, the Mashburn side. Still, you know, may, you might trim off a side and then reconfigure where the Sheriff's Department there. This radio tower is going to be obviously an eyesore. That's right on Penn Avenue, with the way y'all got it drawn. Uh, that's right down near where your, uh, that warehouse is.
If I, if I compromise in this plan, I might would shift this line more this way to give a little bit more frontage down there for commercial development. In other words, where you say, you know, radio tower, that could be.
Does the radio?
What you just said, the radio tower could be moved to the southern edge of the site off the way.
Could the radio tower be moved back toward the wetlands?
This is, again, this is like a.
Not the. I, I, I know. We're just trying to work something out.
If, if, if north is up on the page, what, thirty acres, if you were to take the east line, uh, rotate the counter clock wise at forty-five degrees and take the radio tower and put it back in what would be a corner on, off of Pusser Avenue, off of Pusser Road? It gets it off the road and same end was.
Might give us a little, you know, commercial area.
And that give us more commercial that's adjacent to our, calling our downtown.
I, I'm just thinking of, you know, move most of the development. Again, I, I, what, what generates this eastern property line? Is that what the blue?
What David was saying, I'm sorry, line, I couldn't see it.
Right.
Well, he was saying move that line this direction rather than that direction.
I guess my question, what, what generated this line, Mr. Rutherford, this blue line, the eastern property line? What, what generated that?
Thirty-eight, three, three roads and thirty-eight. Remember saying, rotate that, so it cuts down there with the frontage. You don't need, you don't need frontage for a radiator.
Right, right. And I mean, this is very conceptual anyway.
And the, you know, this is, like you said, it's conceptual. We still own the property. In the, we get a hot project that needs this space, we can deal with it. But I would just shift it a little.
Yeah, I think.
Retain some for commercial.
Well, there again, I'm, you know, not.
I mean, acres in that whole drill.
Connect.
That, that kind of falls into what was called the, uh, uh, South Campus, and I think it's three hundred acres. If you count in, you know, where all the other dorms and buildings and all that is. The South Campus is three hundred acres, and you have the housing part, the South of Pusser, and you got the North Campus, and you have the Endeavor Industrial.
I mean, one is not developed.
From this proposed, the blue line we're looking at is what, another quarter or a half, half mile to the property land? Along Pusser Road.
It's a, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good ways.
I know we checked it one day.
I, I think that creek that runs through there, the, the divison, you got about fifty acres, uh, on that. If that's north of the southwest corner, and this would take thirty, so there's still twenty acres and so on this side of that creek to the.
So with the shift, like Mr. Peacock mentioned, if we shift that, that would probably roughly forty-five degrees then. Um, that would give you roughly three, maybe even four, three to four hundred feet more frontage and the potential for the radio tower to go on off Pusser Road in the back. So I, I'd be perfectly fine with that.
Yes.
If the board.
Can, can we get that, uh, you know, the, uh, table this right now and get, uh, get that kind of drawn up so that we can see graphically what, what that would look like pretty quickly?
Yeah, yeah. When you've got money to build your office, correct?
Correct.
The hangar and helipad, when did you envision that coming in?
Oh, that's now.
Yeah, that, that would be the entire, that would be.
Is that part of it?
Yes, sir.
The twenty mill.
Tower, that's, that's, that's us being a one piece of property.
Yeah, well, I know you want, but do you have the money to build the hangar?
Yes, sir.
And the helipad and move the tower and all your commuter equipment.
Unless, unless we drag our feet in the price of business.
We're not gonna drag our feet. Uh.
So this is, this is a long e-jog.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I'd like to see, you know, the new drawing, the shift if we can.
But I'd like to see what that looks like. I, I, I'm just interested in moving this complex as far to the east, I guess is what I would say is possible.
Mr. Chairman, we have a one o'clock meeting. And y'all, David, can you do something by one o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, time is of essence, and let's see what you can do.
I'll get close.
I think you're coming to the.
So basic, basically, all, all these guys are gonna do is what Mr. Bill just did with his ink pen.
Yeah, that's right.
That's, that's what it would be, is just moving them back.
Yeah, that, and then, and that's gonna give you roughly, for Nadan, three, four hundred more feet of frontage and put the tower in the, in the back.
Okay, just shows what you got.
That's leaving the, the wetlands intact.
Leaving the wetland.
So nothing.
They have to, I would, I would say that would need to be. There, there again, I, I'm, I still lean towards, I like the adjacency of having the sheriff's office down closer where we've got other institutional facilities. I, you know, I had no idea it was gonna be two and a half, three million dollars. I almost thought, looking at it, it could almost, the site could almost be balanced by basically taking that, that hill that's in between Penn Avenue and the lower part of the site and, and basically just cutting that, moving it. That's basically, basing everything being, that's good dirt to be able to do that. Till Geotech's done, we don't know whether that's even feasible. Of course, until Geotech's done, we don't know anything about this side either. So, and both of those.
It's not flat.
Huh?
That side is not flat.
Whi- which neither side is flat.
So we'll be back at one o'clock? Is that the consensus?
He's the chairman.
Yep. Be back at one o'clock, just take a look at it. I mean, it seems like that's a simple thing to, to do and, uh, make, make a decision at that time.
Yes, sir. Did you get, you have a question, Mr. President?
Well, nah. Don't answer it.
Okay, you have a motion to table this request until one o'clock?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to table.
So at one would be on, at first, because these guys, you know, getting.
We've got, uh, we've got the strategic plan. I'm sure if we can make a decision, we've got, is Grace Woke gonna be here or?
Some of the team will be in person, some, he'll be online.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I don't.
I hate to say this, but I'm thinking this shouldn't take, but if, you know, ten minutes, you either look at it, you, you agree with it or you don't.
Yeah, I don't see really that's.
Just as a courtesy to these guys.
What we're talking about doing, but if that's the direction, you've got a motion to table this until one o'clock?
Right.
Okay. Chair, want to take a motion to second that motion? Got a second from, I got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to table the request, the sheriff's request until one o'clock, and a second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it's stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. See y'all at one o'clock.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving, uh, down the agenda, item number four, Ms. Daniels, this is, uh, uh, an agreement for public services for ambulance standby at the Sneed's boat races.
The request for board approval of an agreement for public services for an ambulance standby, need boat races on August nineteenth and twentieth for a total of fourteen hours. It is also a request to waive the deposit, but invoice the full amount that accounted Sneed in the amount of fourteen hundred dollars.
You've heard the explanation in the request.
Some movement, Jeff.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it's stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Uh, as Ms. Daniels explained, item number five, uh, will be moved to when? Did we decide?
This afternoon.
This afternoon at one o'clock as well? Okay, uh, that takes us to item number six, which is a, uh, approval of, uh, D H M Task Work Order twenty, twenty-three dash three, Ms. Daniels.
Uh, this is for Poplar Springs Road regarding a, uh, task work order for C E I Services in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this request with the funds coming from road construction.
Right, we got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, uh, is a board approval of a Department of Transportation B-Stop agreement, Ms. Daniels.
Uh, yes, the B-Stop grant agreement with F D O T in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars.
And this is for which project? This Gum Creek?
Yes, well, it's, 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 uh, Jeffrey.
Oh, okay.
I move to approve the B-Stop agreement.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it's stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item number nine, uh, number eight, excuse me, is a board approval of Russian Road, change order number one, Ms. Daniels.
The total amount of a change order of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. And this is the change order to add a half inch of asphalt to Russian Road, making the total thickness one point five inches.
And this is, uh, a- as a result of the staff recommendation to have that extra half inch, just to make sure it holds up, um, okay?
I make a motion to approve the request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any comments, questions, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
How long is that road?
How long is that road? Yeah. Oh, item number nine, uh, board approval of Taylor Road, change order number one, this is Summer.
Yes, it's also to add a half inch of asphalt to Taylor Road and, uh, changes the amount by thirty-three thousand, thirty dollars.
Where, where is Taylor Road?
That's off South Road.
Top South Road.
On the west side of South Road.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield to approve the request. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it's stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item number ten, moving down the agenda, is, uh, board approval to award, uh, water sewer expansion on Delmore Road, especially with Project Pat, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is to award this project in the amount of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and it will be funded through the R I P grant.
And I ask, uh, the question at our agenda meeting, if this is a contractor that we were familiar with, and I think the answer was correct, uh, yes, that we've either done some research on them or we worked with them before.
That's correct. I don't think we've worked with them, isn't it new?
We've just had a few projects within C B N L.
Okay.
Uh, I, I think the actual constructions were like seven ninety-four.
Yeah, it was going to correct. It's actually seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cent for this project.
From my understanding, it was in place that the contractors were on another level.
Thanks, sir.
I make a motion to approve it.
That motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it's stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number eleven is the approval of a survey proposal from Southeastern Survey, and this is for, uh, uh, Peacock's Bridge Road, uh, Peacock Bridge Row, Boat Lamp, um, this is as part of us moving forward and purchasing the property.
That's right, three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars to have this survey completed.
And this is primarily a boundary survey, and then also, uh, they'll, uh, uh, locate any of the, any of the improvements, including the lamp itself.
Didn't we have this survey in preparation for that purchase a couple of years ago?
Well, I, I'm sure we didn't because Rhett's handling this, but if he'd had it done, he would have, he would have had it. I don't think we ever moved forward with that.
Okay.
We would have had, we probably talked about getting this survey, but I don't think we actually did it.
Make the motion, uh, move forward with this contingent upon, uh, making sure that it hasn't been done.
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Uh, any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it's stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item number twelve, uh, this is board approval to reduce the rental rates for the Ag Center, uh, Ms. Daniels.
So in our recent update to the rental fees, the new method for calculating that has worked well for all facilities except the Ag Center on Highway ninety. Uh, and it's just because of how large the facility is and how, uh, the capacity, because we based it on capacity. And so it becomes a really large rental fee. So we are proposing that for this facility, we go back to what the original price was, um, which is, um, oh, he explains here that, that the price to rent it would be nearly two thousand dollars if we went on the new fee. And so we're proposing to move back to the old ones, which are attached in your packet. And so it's based on the building or the arena, you know, whatever it is they're renting, it's broken down, uh, which it would be four hundred, four hundred for the auditorium, four hundred for the multipurpose room, six fifty for the multipurpose and auditorium, and then four hundred for the covered arena. We feel like that was really a, a more reasonable price.
It's just the only real facility that kind of falls in this category.
So far, all the other, uh, is working out well, but this one, we just, we felt like we, um, just didn't realize that how much it costs.
How much it can impact on the rental fee.
I make a motion to approve this request.
I second. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, it's stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, motion passed unanimously. Um, item number thirteen is, uh, consideration by the board of the utility fee schedule amendment for nonprofits, Ms. Daniels.
So, uh, it's been requested by a couple of our customers that we set up a special revenue class for nonprofits. And so Rhett did some research. He would recommend that we reduce the water usage per gallon and base charges, and base charges for commercial water and sewer as well as commercial irrigation. Uh, this would be done by an amendment to the recently adopted fee resolution that impacts all customers. Uh, so per the I R S, there are twenty-seven different nonprofit categories. Um, so he, he's got there, and it goes, the next paragraph is what the updated rates would be as well as an attachment, um, where he lays out the, I believe these are the customers just by account number that would fall into this category.
And so based on, from, from our discussion, uh, at last month's meeting, based on these rates and based on the number of nonprofits that we assume that they'll, this will be impacting, it will have a very, almost inconsequential impact on the utility fees.
Overall, I believe that's the case, but I think today, because you'd have to do this through a public hearing, um, wouldn't it? I think we're just looking for, is this something you all want to pursue or?
Yeah.
You know, before we move forward, but this is the information he put together on it.
I got a couple of questions. Uh, I didn't see the total number that we're talking about. Did I miss it?
The total number of customers.
Yeah.
I believe there, you know, this is a reference to the customers.
Well, I looked at that, but I don't. Know the account number or accounts?
It would be nine, which is what's attached.
Oh, okay, so that's part of the account number. It just says account. It doesn't say anything. Uh. So how much money we're talking about? We've got nine. I think first thing we gotta do is determine what is a nonprofit. Have some guidelines on that.
I think that's pretty easily definable, isn't it? I mean, well, they have to have some kind of.
I think we have, have to have a policy. Have to have a policy, but now, what are we going to do for the others in the county?
The other.
I got churches, I got several churches, and we're making a donation to these churches and nonprofits. By doing this, what are you gonna do for the ones that aren't on our system? Because I got numerous churches left to have this donation to them each month.
And we really, they were always.
I agree what you're saying, but they are scattered throughout the county. They're not on the system. So I can see them coming to us and asking for, what is it? Fifty, a hundred dollars a month donation from us? What are you gonna tell them?
No. They don't buy utilities.
Well, but what I'm saying, you're making a donation.
There's no way for us to do that, that's good.
Oh, it is, there is. Clay can write checks every month. Pardon?
You, you can't make a donation to a religious.
That's what we're doing.
No, we're just, basically, we're.
We're reducing the amount of cost for service that we provide. We just don't provide it to those other churches.
What I'm saying, that is a donation.
Really, that is a donation.
As long as we're talking about a class of nonprofits that just happens to include a religious organization, that's not gonna violate the First Amendment, but you can't just outright give nonprofits to, um.
Because there are other nonprofits that are not churches.
Correct.
Okay. That's why I asked, what is a nonprofit?
I think what he's suggesting is, if you're gonna say nonprofit, there'll be twenty-seven classes, and right now, today, there's nine that fall in that category on our system, best he can determine.
And of those nine, are all, all of them churches or are they?
Uh, there's.
Like Habitat, Manic, Habitat, Manic.
Two that's not.
Like you say, everyone is not on our system, our service, you know, we're not servicing. So we look, we get cross-street on one that we are giving service to.
But you're giving a monetary reward to those people. Whether you're doing it and reducing the fees or handing them cash.
I, I guess you could, you could.
No, that's not.
You could look at it that way.
Well, that's just what's on the water and sewer.
That's the ones that's on water and sewer, we're giving them a fifty dollar donation. Pardon?
Always out, away from there, don't fly. I mean, you've got, I mean, I don't know how many churches there are in that county. And you've got other organizations, nonprofits, people like we're Florida Electric. They're nonprofits. I mean, you could go on and on, a nonprofit.
You said there's twenty diff, twenty-seven different categories of nonprofits.
According to the IRS, there are twenty-seven different nonprofit categories.
I know I did it's that many. I knew there was a bunch, but I didn't know there was that many, just, but. But again, I, right now, we're only talking about roughly approximately nine, but we've identified as non, being, being in one of those twenty-seven categories that are currently on our system.
Not lying. On the line, yeah. No, not on.
So, I mean, we're, we're, we're really talking about almost, um, I don't wanna say inconsequential, but it's very, it's almost insubstantial, unsubstantial amount of dollars that that is gonna be impacted.
I'm, I'm not opposed to helping, but I, what I am opposed to is discriminating against the others too.
Can you discriminate when you don't offer that service to?
You're giving these people fifty dollars a month reduction in their water bill and that's just saying they're putting fifty dollars.
They get on the system with it or something. You're the one that said the system's gonna go up to the can.
Oh, I'd love to see it go.
And once they, once they get on it and once they become a utility customer, then that same.
Revenue is offered.
Same discount will be available to them. I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but you can look at it the other way.
Well, I know.
Saying as well.
You gotta look at it both ways, where we're sitting here.
I mean, I don't have a profit, I mean, I don't have a problem doing, uh, you know, basically giving this discounted rate to nonprofits that are on our utility system. I mean, do we need motion to move forward with, uh, what would be the next step, actual schedule?
We need to set a.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
So you want.
Go on your next deal. It has to be able to be printed on the bill. He didn't tell me, oh, yes, he did. So we would set a public hearing for September twelfth at nine AM and he'd make sure it goes out on the next round of bills that this is being considered.
I make a motion with that folks here.
My second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, second from Commissioner McKinney. To move forward with setting a public hearing for September twelfth at nine o'clock AM. Uh, any other questions, comments, concerns, clarifications, hearing none, all this in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Uh, item number fourteen, Mill Pond update, Mr. Daniels.
He has, uh.
Rhett's not here, so.
He had to step out, but we do have a representative here, Mr. Derek Fussell.
Good morning. What's your name again? I didn't.
I'm Derek Fussell. I'm the regional biologist for Fish My Life Commission's invasive plant management.
Okay, welcome.
So Rhett and I toured the Mill Pond last Thursday. Um, and the drip system worked, the drip treatment worked, uh, all the hydrola for the, the entire length of the Mill Pond has been impacted. There are some, um, growing tips on the hydrola that's in the lower third of the Mill Pond. So maybe a little bit half, you know, from the, uh, power lines down, we found growing tips. We've been in consult, consultation with Dr. Ben Sperry, who did the drip system with the Army Corps of Engineers and University of Florida for Research Force. Um, and we're gonna do another follow-up treatment. We had two more five-hundred gallon totes of Aquaphol. Left, so we didn't use it all for the initial treatment. So we'll do a follow-up treatment, um, when the park closes, so after Labor Day during the week, we'll be doing a follow-up treatment.
You'll, you'll start the system, I mean, you'll start the, uh, application at, at Blue Springs, the same location or?
That's yet to be determined. Um, I was talking to Dr. Sperry yesterday and he said we may actually do it closer. So we have, um, access has been granted by a private landowner there at the power lines. We could set up the, the equipment and everything and do the application from there down.
Which to me would seem to be a more effective approach, it would seem to be.
It could be, um, you know, my concern is we did the dye study from Blue Springs. That gave us a look at the flow and the spread, how the, the herbicide dissipated from side to side. If we do it from the power lines, what's the effect, you know, are we gonna be able to get edge to edge that close to the treatment area?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I've also planned on talking to him about, uh, not just doing drip, but having some applications on the sides via airboat trailing hoses, so it'd be a, a two-pronged approach. But I don't wanna mess with his research stuff, you know, they've been doing flow, they've got point samples. He's sent, um, some of his technicians back up here since we did the treatment. And so they've been monitoring everything since June fourteenth and fifteenth. Um, so if he doesn't want us to do additional stuff, or he may say, you know, that would be beneficial, cause we wanna get everything that we can out of the treatment.
You said, uh, it, uh, the, the drip system, the treatment, uh, the application, uh, has actually been impactful to the hydrola. How about to the eelgrass and the other?
The only place that I've seen, and this was, um, so, two things, a lot of times when I'm doing my survey, it's an ocular estimate. So there was some impacted eelgrass right below Blue Springs where the, the treatment was going in. Um, Aquaphol K isn't detrimental at that three parts per million that we were treating. So it's not gonna hurt the eelgrass all the way through the Mill Pond, but right there where it was most concentrated before it started dissipating, it, it did impact. So, but we also did a treatment with a different herbicide in the swimming area to remove. Um, I issued a permit to the county, Rhett wanted to try to remove all of the eelgrass from the swim area. So that first little bit could be impacted from that herbicide treatment as well.
So is the eelgrass not really, um, being defined as being problematic or I thought it was?
No, it's, there's, there's a lot of it that gets cut from propellers and everything, but it's not a, not a problematic species like.
But it does shed leaves, correct?
Some, yeah, I mean, that and propeller damage causes a lot of.
So that gets flowed up to the top and then it goes down and gets tangled with the hydrola, right?
Yep.
Gets a lot of the problems we have. We need to get rid of the eelgrass.
So from what I can see, it does look like that the, the hydrola has been impacted for the upper, uh, third of the, the area where it was, uh, the worst.
Right. Well, actually, the worst part was from ninety up. Um, in two thousand nineteen, just above the, the campground areas where I first found it, uh, during my survey. So it's moved from the lower end of the Mill Pond up. But the, the, from Blue Springs, from the treatment area down almost to the power lines, there's no attached hydrola whatsoever. Um, and I have done, I did a, um, we mapped with sonar, with Fish Finder. So we have sonars that collect data and then we can process to create heat maps, bio volume maps of vegetation. It doesn't differentiate between the, the types of vegetation, it just gives us a volume. So I did a post-treatment that replicates, you know, what it was at the time of the treatment. And then in the next few weeks, I'll be doing a follow-up treatment and we can compare, we can see mathematically, you know, what reduction in biomass and that would be the loss of hydrola.
And, and once the hydrola dies, uh, dissipates, is it, is it basically staying on the surface? Is it falling to the, the bed of the pond?
So I, I've seen it laying down on the bottom, but then there's fragments that are floating and getting tangled up in the rest of the hydrola that's still standing there. So what people are seeing from Highway ninety is a standing crop that's damaged from the hyd, from the treatment. Um, combined with the green that looks like algae is actually, um, duckweed species, so it's just a few millimeters long, but there's billions. So that's what the green out there is actually duckweed, which without the impediment of the hydrola, would be flushed on out through the gate.
So w- once the hydrola dissipates, then the duckweed will, will, you know, flush up, flush on through as well.
Uh, there was supposed to be someone joining us on line, you know about that?
Yeah, I, I don't think Dr. Sperry, I asked Rhett earlier and he said he wasn't.
And then also. Debbie Matthews is the next person on the agenda about this same matter. She may wanna.
Yeah, and before we ask you to come up, Debbie, uh, any other commissioners got any other questions while we've got Derek here, I mean?
Well, when are you gonna treat it again?
As soon as the park, you know, Dr. Sperry's gonna let us know where to treat from. And then the plan was not to shut down the concession area again, so during the week.
We could actually treat with him open if we went to the power line.
We could, we could, but.
Well, that's, the problem appears to be from the power line at ninety.
Right now.
I'm kinda though, he's saying that we probably need to treat them up there to make sure the spray.
Yeah, they tried that and it, right down the center, it didn't disperse out the whole creek.
Thought you said.
It, it did disperse. I mean, there's.
Well, I mean, it didn't kill all the way down near ninety and everything, is what I'm saying. If you set up a power line, you'd probably get a better.
Well, that, my only concern with that is that there's not enough room from the treatment location to get it spread out.
Spread out.
And that's why I said, you know, we talked with Dr. Sperry and see if, if we do the drip system, let it be running and then bring in my applicator to treat on the sides to accentuate.
Okay.
Because last year during the treatment, that's what I did is we only had hydro, sixty-five acres from the power lines down. We top-loaded. Rhett worked with me. We lowered the Mill Pond twenty inches. And then when I finished the application, he closed the gates so that we had increased retention time. So we top-loaded that zone so that we had as much contact time with that herbicide moved it down the Mill Pond. So if we put it right there and it's channelized right down, because boat traffic and everything, you know, the flow is going for the, the least restrictive area. If we put all the herbicide down in the middle, we're not gonna impact anything on the sides.
Um, funding, how are y'all set on funding?
This is all through the University of Florida and the Army Corps. So Dr. Sperry has said we can treat, continue to treat, follow-up treat. Until, until they pull his funding and I have two hundred acres in my work plan with zero dollars attached to it. But I can ask, you know, if something fell for, fell through with him, I've got it in my work plan that I can ask for money from the Fish My Life Commission.
Okay, so, so from the power lines up, from what I can tell, it looks like it's almost bank to bank. I mean, is that a fair assessment?
You mean gone, bank to bank?
Yeah, gone, bank to bank.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Derek, while we've got him here? Uh, again, you know, keep our fingers crossed, uh, I, I think, uh, if it proved to be substantially more beneficial to treat earlier and to treat from the, from Blue Springs down. You know, I, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I, I would be, I would be in favor of closing, asking the concessionaire to close again for a weekend. Uh, it's not Labor Day weekend, not one of the bigger weekends, but.
Right.
If you came to us and said it really would prove the beneficial treat earlier, do it right away as quickly as possible. Uh, and, and disperse the herbicide from Blue Springs as opposed from, you know, the further downstream. I, I'd like to know that as quickly as possible, you know, if we've got to ask the concession to close, we can do it.
Yeah, but if you're putting it out at Blue Springs, it's diluting as it goes.
It, well, from what I, this was my first drip application and basically Dr. Sperry calculated in what the flow is for the entire Mill Pond. We put in the dye on Tuesday. That following Monday, there was still dye present at Highway ninety. So that gives them the, the calculations and basically what he said is you're sending a slug. So we're creating an eight-hour time period that we put the herbicide out at the three parts per million and it's moving at that three parts per million all the way down the Mill Pond. It's not.
It's not diluting?
It's not diluting, you know, as you, if you put a drop, one drop, then yeah, that drop's gonna be diluted by the time it gets to the end. We're putting in a constant flow. It's not a drip, it's a constant flow to create a three parts per million rate. And that three parts per million slug moves down the Mill Pond as a, as a whole intact.
Seem, seem like they're gonna be killing it from the very beginning down. Cause if you kill it part of the way down, you still got all the flow down, tacking back.
Yeah, and, you know, the, it's not the first time it's been in the Mill Pond. My predecessor's predecessor treated it in nineteen ninety-three and Jesse sent me pictures from ninety-three when it was the same look, you know, I mean, I don't have any of the data, I don't have, we don't have satellite images like we have now. Um, sonar data, but the picture that he sent me looks like what you look at from the Highway ninety bridge, a solid green mat. He treated it, put in the carp. I call these, the big carp that are in there that aren't doing any good for us now, I call them Jesse's carp. Um, we, we typically like to put in carp, you know, twelve to fifteen months before they start doing good. And then you get five to seven years of working life out of them and then their diet changes, their metabolism slows down. They're not eating enough of, if they are eating any of the hydrola. So last year when I did the initial treatment, we stocked two hundred grass carp. Rhett and I worked together, had the carp rodeo, tried to remove some of those. We're gonna do that again to remove those big in, ineffective fish. And then the fish that I put in last March, I've seen some of them, they're in that growing size where they're doing us some good. So any hydrola that comes back, they're gonna seek it out. They, we've got some radio telemetry studies that have shown, put a carp in a water body, a grass carp, and they're seeking out, they're looking for, that's preferred food for them over anything else. So we're gonna look at stocking another two hundred fish this coming late winter, January, February, when we stock them. Um, that gives them another twelve to fifteen months before they're doing good. So we've got two age classes of fish that'll be in the Mill Pond working to keep the hydrola at the, the lowest feasible level.
Are the, are the carp detrimental to any of the, anything else in the Mill Pond, I mean, that you're aware of?
They eat some of the native, um, they, they may eat on some coon tails, some, uh, some macroalgies and stuff in there, but nothing, nothing else. You know, they, right now, they're probably, you know, rooting around, looking for invertebrates, eating crawfish, you know, like munch on some snails. I did take one fish out and, uh, tried to get an age on it from its odorless in the, the ear bone.
No.
Um, and had nothing in its digestive system or stomach, so, and it was a thirty-pound fish.
A big fish. You think that, uh, they still got age, you know, they would eat more when it's a big one.
You would think, but they, their diets and stuff change after that, you know, seven to ten-year time period. And they're just not functional anymore as a eating vegetation for us.
How long will the carp live?
Twenty years or more, and if these fish were put in in the early nineties, you know, they're pushing thirty years.
Yep.
But water chemistry, water, you know, it's cooler, you know, there, and there are some that are starting to, to die of attrition. And I've seen some floating out there.
When do you think we'll have some answers?
Well, Dr. Sperry, Dr. Sperry asked me, his last thing was, you know, if he didn't come himself, he's had some other issues. I think he's in Connecticut right now dealing with some Army Corps stuff, but, um, if he couldn't make it, could Rhett and I put the equipment out and do the treatment on our own and everything, you know, there's, there's no issues with that. So as far as when and where he wants us to do it, you know, if we do it from the power lines, we could do it next week. If we had, need to do it from Blue Springs, then we wait until the Monday or Tuesday after Labor Day, you know, we'll be ready to go.
I'd love to see it go from the power line.
Huh?
I'd like to see it go from the power line.
I mean, is Dr. Sperry gonna be the one that makes that decision or do we have some?
I'm, I mean, I'm gonna let him, since he's doing, collecting the data and information for the research side of this, I'd like him to make that call.
Well, why don't we do it this way? Why, and once he makes that decision, uh, as a recommendation, why don't you bring, get that back to Rhett and let him bring that back to us and if, you know, we've got some, uh, concerns or, or questions about it, then we can address it at that time.
Okay.
Sound okay? All right, Derek, we certainly appreciate it. Yeah, I'm gonna ask Ms. Matthews to come forward while we got Derek still here.
I call Derek so much when I call him, the first words out of his mouth are, yes, Miss Debbie, what? So I, I wanted to tell you, I appreciate everything everyone's doing for the Mill Pond. It needs it and as aggressive as our hydrola is, we've got to be just as aggressive. Now, just like. Now, just like Derek said, in nineteen ninety-three, Rhett came to my house uh, a couple of weeks ago and he looked around. He said that some of the hydrola at the end of our dock was crunching. The one close to the shore, there was no crunch. Uh, he did make the comment that there's a lot of people that have the perception that it's really bad when they cross the bridge. And as I told him, perception is reality to people when they see it out there. Uh, but in nineteen ninety-three, I asked Rhett, cause he showed me a picture and said, when was this? And I said, I don't have any idea. He said, we had it bad back then. I said, what did you do to get rid of it? He said they drained, lowered the uh, the water level and sprayed. And that's how they got rid of it. My question was, and I even said it to Derek, why reinvent the wheel if it worked? Uh, I'm seeing with the hydrola, I wanted to look up and you know me, I'm gonna look up and see what everything looks like. At first I thought it had been two years it had been bad, but no, when Derek said he noticed it in uh, ninety two thousand nineteen, I saw pictures where we haven't been able to get in the ponds since two thousand twenty-one. If by Janu- I mean, uh, July that year, we could not get in the pond. So it's twenty-one. So it's been three years we've been with this problem. I think we've been fair and we've been lenient trying to see what we could do. Hydrola is known for depleting the pond of oxygen. Therefore, we will have fish kills if we're not careful. The other thing it does, it is a host for the blue green algae that causes respiratory issues or can cause it in adults or children. That's another thing we've got to look at. Uh, the hydrola, it stops the flow. We used to have a flow underneath our dock. There is no flow at all there anymore because of all the hydrola. And that's another problem it causes. Um, kids that fall in the water, it says it will cause them to drown because of the uh, all of the vines. Besides that, of course, it lowers your property value. Um, I guess what I'm thinking at this point is we've got to get aggressive. We're on the same team. As I told Rhett, I am for him. I wanna see this, everybody succeed. Because when you succeed, then I succeed. I believe you were appointed here by God himself because he's the one that's over all of uh, our governments and we pray for each one of y'all daily because that's, he entrusted us with his environment. And I believe that that was a gift and we just haven't done a very good job of taking care of our mill pond. That's that's the bottom line on that.
Well, I thought as as you've heard, we've uh, we've been aware of the problem for several years now. We've been working at trying to come up with a solution. I think we've got a hopefully a workable solution that is from the reports that we're getting is working and will work. And we've just gotta give it a little bit of time to to continue the second application. And if it does what Derek uh, says it will and what we hope that it will, uh, hopefully will be the mill pond will be free of uh, hydrola for a short period of time. It's it's gonna be something that, just like it came back from nineteen ninety-three, it's gonna be something that we're gonna have to be proactive uh, with and uh, stay on top of.
And I wanna make sure I understood correctly, cause I have been told, and Derek, you're my expert, okay? That if you take hydrola out, it, we have paid before to have ours removed. Uh, it doesn't die. It may dry up, but if it gets back in the water.
In a certain amount of time.
It will.
That's that's how it moves from boat trailers, get it on a boat trailer, it can go directly within a day or so. You know, it can re-sprout. It sprouts from fragments.
And that's my concern too. You know, being medically minded, I look at the mill pond, we had an infection. Well, we cleared up part of it, but if we don't clear up all of it, it's gonna get reinfected up by Blue Springs. Because boats, when they come by our house, and there's not very many anymore, we used to have them all the time. Uh, they are clogging up with the hydrola and they're taking it right back up where they just fixed. Another problem, and I think you really need to look at it, and I think it's in uh, Donna, your section down by Chapola. Chapola River down south in uh, Spring Creek and south in particular, it's getting full of hydrola. It uh, is so bad. I know that when Chris goes down to our camp by Turtle Bend, he pulls up hydrola that has already rooted every week all around our dock. So it is, it's a a big problem for our natural resources. But again, I appreciate everybody. I appreciate the time and the effort that you're putting forth. I appreciate this gentleman taking my calls and being so nice. He's always very, very nice. And I appreciate it. And I'm not against anybody. I'm not trying to cause any problems. All I want to do is us see a united front to attack an issue that we have.
We appreciate it.
And I appreciate it.
Commissioner.
Yeah, Mr. Fosse, for your uh, experience, have you been involved with any drawdowns like Ms. Matthew was talking about?
We, Rhett and I did the two thousand nineteen drawdown on Mill Pond. Um, you know, and that was one thing that we we asked Dr. Sperry, you know, what triggered, why? Why did it show up? Cause I took over as regional biologist in two thousand thirteen and hadn't had hydrola on the survey until two thousand nineteen. So it was like, you know, but it it was before the drawdown. So it wasn't the cause of it, but it exacerbated, you know, exposure because hydrola creates um, turons or tubers on a root system and that's what it can re-sprout. So when you top kill it or harvest it, pull it up, you're leaving those, it's kinda like nutgrass. If anybody knows what nutgrass is. You've left that little tuber in the soil in the bottom of the mill pond. Some environmental factor, time of day, temperature, you know, the mill pond's pretty constant temperature wise, water temperature wise. But time of day, length of day, amount of sunshine, you know, can trigger that to grow. Something Dr. Sperry said was it could have been in conjunction. That's why, you know, we went from five or six acres when I found it in the survey. After the drawdown, we were at fifty to sixty acres. So something during that drawdown could have triggered it, you know, that that what was exposed because it's not drying the entire mill pond down. Um, I think like Jackson in Tallahassee, um, like Munson in Tallahassee, those have been lakes that have water control structures on or Jackson doesn't. It's a natural. So you have to wait on a drawdown there. Like Munson, they've drawn down and passed and scraped down to the bare wooden old shore. Um, that's just something that's not gonna be feasible in the mill pond. Um, we use a drawdown on Deer Point Lake just about every year. Um, it's based on the bio volume of vegetation within the lake and I give a recommendation to the county who controls the water levels, since it's a drinking water reservoir, to say, okay, we're at sixty-five percent bio volume in the lake, you need to do a drawdown to kill back. Cause the big problem there is aluminum coming. So neighbors, plant species, it's not an invasive like hydrola, but it has invasive tendencies. And in Deer Point, it's the predominant species of vegetation. So we make that recommendation. They draw the lake down for roughly three months. It gives us a dry period with the hopes that we have some good cold weather to freeze and kill backs of that vegetation. So doing that on the mill pond probably wouldn't be as beneficial because the water temperature doesn't change. It's constant, you know, coming from spring, sixty-eight degrees. Uh, it does warm up by the time it gets to the lower end, just from sunlight exposure and everything, but um, you aren't able because of that flow, you can't cut that off, sorry. So we can't effectively drain the mill pond completely to dry out and have some sort of working service.
Good, thanks. Any other questions? Well, again, Debbie, we appreciate it. Carrie, you've got something. Yes.
So I just wanna one reiterate what they are doing to eradicate, fix the pond. As a homeowner there, I'm gonna have to uh, disagree with Ms. Debbie's statement. My property value has increased by a hundred and fifteen thousand since we built it in twenty twenty-one. Um, we've had members, uh, uh, people stay there with us. Our first year as an Airbnb generated fifty-one thousand dollars. We are at seventy-two K this year in August. That is bringing sales tax, the number of people who are coming in that are paying bed tax, sales tax, visiting our parks, eating in our restaurant has not been deterred by the pond. Yes, it is an eyesore, but there is a huge section, the predominant caves and the places to visit are on the north end of the pond and are doing well. We had uh, the, when the drawdown happened, the only good thing that came from that drawdown was we were able to build our dock. That's the only good at that point. They were able to redo the park. Um, we didn't have um, hydrola the first year that we were built. Um, Mr. Pomfrey stayed there. He could attest to, we had zero hydrola at our dock and we are a quarter mile south of the boat landing. We had no hydrola. After that, it continued to grow. We are at this point, zero hydrola back where we are. There is no hydrola along the shore. There's none around the dock. There's none in the mainstream and it is continuing to die and move. Um, I think what they're doing is great. I think if you do a drawdown, you're going to hurt our tourism dollars. You are absolutely going to hurt this economy because that's what people are coming to do. So I'm adamantly opposed.
Regardless of whether the property values are impacted negatively or positively, I I think we all do agree that the hydrola needs to go away.
Absolutely.
And whatever, you know, whatever is the most effective means of doing that, uh, you know, based on experts' opinions, Dr. Sperry and Derek Fosse.
That's what they've done. Two thousand nineteen, they sprayed it, didn't do a darn thing. It doesn't appear. It did. It actually grew more. But now based on the aqua- aquatall and the way they're treating it now, there is absolutely a huge impact from the beginning of the pond all the way down to the highway. So I really feel like we need to trust them.
Debbie was actually saying that she's in favor of drawing it down. Uh, basically what I heard her say was uh, uh, you know, it it seems to be working. Let's give it a chance to to work. If it does, fine. If it doesn't, uh, or if it becomes where it's coming back quicker and quicker, then we may have to look at uh, some alternative means. But for right now, I think we're all on the same page. Let's continue with the treatment. I'll find out from uh, Dr. Sperry whether, you know, whether it makes sense to do the second application from uh, from the power lines or whether it makes better sense to do it from uh, Blue Springs and let's move forward with second application as best see, as best seen fit by the experts. Thank y'all.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there, 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 there. Is anybody looking at Chapala River as far as?
Question. Um, I, it's one of my water bodies. I typically don't come, usually put in at Highway twenty and go up as far as I can depending on which boat that I'm on. Um, but I do need to come in, we've talked with Dr. Sperry about how much because fragmentation, it's come through the dam and it's, you know, growing in the in the river. Um, how much the treatment could impact it? You know, the water flow may be increased. You know, there's, there's a lot of numbers and calculations, but uh, typically what I see in other water bodies that have it, the Wasissa, uh, Wakulla, Saint Marks, um, when you get high water events, it rips it out. Um, the dark muddy water, she kinda sun kills it, you know, it doesn't let sunlight to it. So when you have high water, increased flow, it can rip it out and kinda manages itself because it's harder for it to get established in flow systems, um, higher flow systems in places that it already has been, like she said Turtle Bend. Um, it may be difficult to do herbicide treatment because most herbicides aren't for higher flow systems. It requires like uh, Procellicor and the Aquatalk are slow moving quiescent waters. So you you have to have that contact time for a herbicide to effectively work on the plants. They've gotta be able to take it up. Um, so if we've got increased flow, we either have to have something that, you know, slows the flow or we increase the amount of herbicide so that we get contact with it. Um, it just be, it's something we'd have to look at.
Can we keep some avenues to monitor today?
Part of the annual survey, you know, I can, I can go up and get, we do ocular estimates of acres. Um, I'm pretty good. It's like people scout the peanut field, you know, how many acres or whatever. Um, so I can, I can keep tabs on the number of acres that we're seeing in the in the river.
Certainly the Chapala River is uh, just as valuable of a of a natural resources to Mill Pond.
Yeah, and uh, last year, I believe it was last year, early, early last year, Dr. Greg Lamb uh, came to me. They have um, Dry Creek, which is not one of my surveyed water bodies, but it flows into the Chapala. Um, they called and asked for consultation. We do extension outreach stuff. Um, they had water lettuce. Where it came from, we don't know. It's not in any of our other water bodies in this part of the panhandle. Uh, but we added Dry Creek to my work plan and we've been treating it now for over a year. Um, because we don't want water lettuce to get to the Chapala River.
How do you treat it?
It's uh, we use a spray herbicide. So he's on an airboat and he's doing a contact spray herbicide uh, called Clipper. Flumioxigen is the ingredient of that. Um, and I think we're doing six ounces per acre. So relatively small amount, doesn't affect the other native vegetation that's there on Dry Creek. And um, water lettuce is like it says, is predominant. Most plants are predominantly ninety percent are better water. So there's not a whole lot of um, muck that's created by the dying water lettuce.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
I think the river, like you say, up and down water and the flow, it probably won't actually bother the river itself, but the dead water off of the side, probably we're gonna see most of it.
Right. And that's where we see, you know, the water lettuce pools, water hyacinths, you know, I've been treating water hyacinths from below Highway twenty all the way up, cause they come from the mill pond. They're released um, for my entire ten years that I've been the regional biologist. It's always in the backwaters and everything.
What probably happened, if you big rain come down the river rather than the flowing or blow it all out on the way and it can't, it it don't, I don't think. It grows good in fast moving water, right through here more in slow moving or dead water.
Derek, thanks for everything you're doing. We appreciate it. Um, just stay with us and let's get this thing cleaned up.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our agenda. Um, Michelle, anything?
Uh, do you want me to stay for the afternoon meeting?
Uh, I don't believe that there'll be any reason. I know that we'll be discussing a couple of issues, but I can't see any reason that you would need to stay if uh, if something does come up, but we'll be in contact. Yeah, okay. Will Ann?
I have just a couple of things. Wanted to notify the board that there, if you haven't heard, there was a fuel spill this morning on Blueberry uh, road about two miles south of the interstate, about thousand to fifteen hundred uh, gasoline spill. And uh, it was an eighty-five hundred gallon tanker, but they, the situation's under control and they're, that had that and everything out there.
Which tanker was it?
I don't know that.
It was not, it was not anything to do with county.
No, 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 but uh, but Keith is on site managing, managing situation. Just wanted y'all to know, we are putting out some information on it if you see that. And then uh, I believe there was a change order. I didn't actually ever get any documentation on that, but I think if you could just explain what it is.
Yes.
We could get approval.
This is basically a change order for the Endeavor Project. We're getting very close to finalizing that. We've had some additional scope of work items added that we've taken care of with the original contingency dollars that were built into the contract. So this change order will be basically deducting from the contract amount, uh, the remaining contingency dollars. I don't know what those exact figures are. Uh, we we ended up with sixty thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars in contingency dollars that were built into M and W's construction contract. And as we've run into things that have that were unanticipated or additional work item, we've been using those contingency dollars to to fund those added work items. And at the end of the project, any of those dollars that are unused have to be deducted via a deductive change order from M and W's contract. And that's where we're at. So it's true enough the contract. And I'll have that, uh, if we take action on that change order at the afternoon's meeting.
Sure. If you wanna get the actual copy of, we can just address that.
Actually, we'll, we'll bring it uh, today.
Well, then we can just handle that then.
You know, I I don't remember what the exact dollars are, but whatever contingency funds will remain in, we just need to deduct that that amount from the contract.
Okay.
Okay, I'll bring that.
And then I need y'all to uh, actually change something. Y'all set a public hearing regarding the utilities for September twelfth at nine. That meeting will actually be a night meeting because of. That meeting will actually be a night meeting because of budgetary requirements with village, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it has to be in the evening that night. Um, and so we always do a night meeting of the regular meeting, so that needs to be September twelfth at six o'clock instead of nine o'clock.
Who made that motion?
I do.
You make it. Clay, is that correct? Do we need to withdraw the motion?
Withdraw the motion and make a new one.
I have a withdrawal motion.
Okay, who's second?
Right.
Okay, so, well, your second, okay, with, uh, do we need to vote on the, the withdrawal of the motion? We don't need to vote on that.
Actually, all you need to do is, he can find amendment, this thing, go down, changing the time. And we vote on the amendment.
Okay, so you wanna make a, an amendment to your motion?
Make a amendment, make it tonight meeting.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Okay, I got a second. Okay, all those in favor of the amended motion? Please signify by raising the right hand. All the quarters, same sign. Motion carries unanimously to amend the previous motion to change the time to nine o'clock, not six o'clock.
That's fine, yeah.
That's all you've got? Can you speak up?
That's all I have.
Anything to mention, Mr.?
Uh, yeah, I wanna bring that back up about the building permit. Wendy is there. Uh, she got back, they sent me a message there, the building permit went out the twenty-first, I mean, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Oh, you know what I'm talking about, on Keith Brogdon. You know, we, I brought it up, you know, the day we discussed it, and I had called Wendy, and Wendy had sent me a message after we left about, uh, permit he had, he building the house itself and his ongoing long time out. He said it cost him eighteen hundred dollars for the permit, that they're wanting him to repay eighteen hundred dollars again or whatever fee for the permit. Uh, we won't do that or, or give him some kind of, if it come up, come on.
Wendy, what, what actually is the, the policy that's in place? So whatever, whatever conditions cause that have to be repaid.
So this is Florida Building Code. We have to follow Florida Building Code. It states that a permit has to be, uh, reapplied for if an inspection has not been done within six months of, and the other permit. So that's on Florida Building.
So in other words, just-
I go back to Mr. Pickon, says, you know, if you have an inspection, that's like renewing it. Now, he said he called for an inspection on the laticle, but that written a building warrant, wondering away until he got finalized and come out and inspected. So he said he called for an inspection. Now, when, I don't know.
So he's been inactive since twenty twenty-one, and it's now twenty twenty-three. So, um, according to building, he let it evolve.
He did say some different things. He doing the work itself. Price of material going up, some things he couldn't get, could get with the COVID and all that, so it finally delayed him. Uh, far as that, uh, eighteen hundred dollars, how to turn around and renew that again, kinda extension now. He did say he wouldn't mind paying a little bit. He don't think it should have to pay eighteen hundred.
It's Florida Building Code.
Yeah, the rea- reason, reason he said that, cause he says, you'd go through the same, probably not the same process. It'd be the same building, and it's already down, been checked out and all, and you just have more lead transferred paper from one over to another and charging. Boy, he looking, it ain't like he going through the process of re-
So the building code says that we have, that he, if it's, if, if there's, there's not been an inspection for six months, then they have to apply for a new permit.
They have to reapply.
We can, if, if nothing is changed in the, I mean, it's the same building, same plans, what, what's the reason for having to charge him again for it? I mean, is there additional? Um, wh- what's the justification for the additional dollars amount?
They're starting over, so everything has to be reprocessed. So they're starting over. If you let something lapse too long, you know, you, you have to make sure that everything is still in good standing moving forward.
Don't, doesn't the, uh, building code or, I know the plumbing units, uh, you have to have your, uh, you got, the first thing you gotta get is septic tank. Got eighteen months, right?
I'm not sure I'm gonna septic exactly.
Unless they change it, you got eighteen months. I know from personal experience. But why are we, and I know what the code says about the inspections, but why are we charging him? Uh, I'll make a motion that we waive his eighteen hundred dollar fee and tell him to get this program, get it.
I'm second there.
Okay, so, so, and we've got a motion from Commissioner Pickoff and the second, and the Commissioner Presfield, which I don't, not mind doing it, but it's just basically, we're not changing any policy.
No, we just, we're just waiving that.
This fee for this one specific.
That's correct.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Pickoff, second, Commissioner Presfield. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, and state the, please signify by raising the right hand. All others, same sign.
Hopefully he'll get it fully.
Yeah, and-
Or the, or at least get an inspection.
Yeah. Uh,
He said he called for inspection, but he wanted to wait till he got through, whatever that, cause, cause I think he must have been ready for the laticle. Instead of coming out and do, just do the laticle, they want to wait and do it all at one time.
Plumbing and mechanical, probably.
What he said to me, yeah. But maybe, uh, it should be, it should be told people at the end, uh, if, if they don't follow, but at the end of the sixth, ain't having inspection by the end of the sixth month, maybe in future, you need to be told to them, they need at least come back in and say-
They're told. We, we've had several extensions in the past month that just need to come.
Yeah, I mean, I, he may have did that, but I think that should be something that needs to be wrote in there, tell each homeowner, whoever building. If you hadn't had an inspection by six months, you need to come back in and let us know what the holdup is, and then you get an extension, you know.
But if it's taking, if it's taking them longer, then alls we have to do is ask for an extension.
Yes, sir.
And, and I guess my, that's my, my question is, what's the difference? I mean, it would, they, I, I guess it's, it's the pro, the time involved with the process of having to go through that process again.
Standards were set by Florida Building Code, we just follow them.
Yeah.
The process now, you, you have, uh, electrical and, uh, uh, plumbing rough end, boys, not, uh, electrical and mechanical rough end. You have inspection then, right?
Mm-hmm, for each.
For each. I mean, you know, and then afterwards, you know, I don't know why it would take them so long to-
Now, I noticed a lot of times, uh, different things that I do, and I didn't, didn't get into the whole house thing and stuff, but I have been involved in it. Most of the times, they wanna come in and lift the inspector rough end. They inspecting all rough end. Well, I know you got different stage life for a footer and stuff like that, but basically you got a rough end and a file. And they, they come and do the file all at one time. I can see, or maybe they didn't, I ain't saying they wouldn't come. I can see where they are from by wanting to wait and do it all at one time. At the same time, I just feel like I don't need to penalize them because they wanted to wait and come at one time. And, and I can understand why, cause that has happened over most of the home building. They will usually don't come out, but they usually build it, say, within six or eight months, too. Uh, I have, so they'll use contractor or stuff like that and move along a little faster.
Yes.
Construction's taking a lot longer these days.
Yeah, we do it, basically, I'm coming to it, and y'all, you all, your own contractor, and doing the work, it takes longer.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Uh, Clay, anything from the clerk's office, Tony, Maria? Nothing? Okay, very good. We'll adjourn this, uh, when you adjust, Danny, will you?